Otters are voracious hunters, eating up to nine pounds of fish a day. They've even been known to kill and eat anacondas, the world's heaviest snakes, along with caiman, a type of freshwater crocodile. The giant river otter is the world's largest otter and grows to be an amazing six feet long. Their webbed feet and wide, flat tails propel them swiftly through the water in search of food or a new place to explore. Their swimming underwater is graceful and effortless. They live in large family groups and are active, playful, and very vocal. And they are endangered. Giant river otters are the rarest otters with only a few thousand left in the world. Their biggest threats are from people who hunt them for their pelts and overfish the rivers, leaving them little food to survive. Zoos across the world are working together to save this endangered species, but very few zoos have them in the United States. Their playful antics, loud calls, and nonstop eating make them a favorite with zoo guests. The city of Santa Ana has committed 1.4 million dollars towards the construction of the Giant River Otter exhibit at the Santa Ana Zoo. By placing them in Amazon's Edge, our beautiful exhibit with its thundering waterfall, our visitors' first animal encounter will be full of energy, sound, and action. The exhibit will have a state-of-the-art water filtration system, so our guests can see the otters through the underwater viewing window, and the otters will have crystal-clear water to live happy and healthy lives. Clean water is vital to life, so we'll teach our guests about the importance of conserving water and using it wisely for ourselves and the animals around us. The city of Santa Ana has a way to make this vision a reality. An additional $600,000 is needed to complete the project. Help us bring the amazing giant river otter to its new home at the Santa Ana Zoo and allow zoo visitors the chance to enjoy this unique and beautiful creature.
By making purchases with local businesses and vendors, more of your money stays close to home. This in turn supports our parks, recreation centers, libraries, and other services and development that enrich and improve the lives of Santa Ana residents. When you shop in Santa Ana, you are contributing to a culture of shared opportunity and progress. Santa Ana's youth commissioners will take you on a tour of some of their favorite businesses in the community.
Our city has a strong presence of Latino culture, and what better way to express that love and pride than through a warm cup of coffee? Located in the heart of downtown Santa Ana, Cafe Calacas is a great place for people from all walks of life to come together for mexicaflops and pan dulce. Catch them early in the day and you might get a hold of some chilaquiles for a hearty breakfast. Cafe Calacas offers a rich variety of savory foods and refreshments that will make your mouth water. Along with delicious dishes, the restaurant is an excellent place to hang out with your friends and converse over great food. It's my favorite way to start the day.
Left of the Dial Records has a wide collection of music, but I always come down for the latest hip-hop releases. With a superb knowledge in music, the owner keeps his shop stocked with new unused records while providing a friendly atmosphere for all. If you have a passion for discovering new music and you haven't been to Left of the Dial yet, I highly recommend a visit. Left of the Dial Records also offers CDs, cassettes, shirts, and posters. There's a lot going on in this little record shop, and it's incredibly fun to partake in. It's important to support local businesses, and I like supporting good art as well. You could say I have become something of a regular. Don't miss out on the great small businesses like Left of the Dial Records in Santa Ana.
VIP Dance Studios, where I come to unwind. I feel like the instructors here care about making Santa Ana kids better dancers. They offer a great selection of exercise classes for anybody looking for a fun and supportive environment. I have been practicing at VIP Dance Studio for two years, and it has been a rewarding experience. I'm so grateful to have had the chance to broaden my skills and meet so many warm and ambitious people. This place is where kids can come to build their confidence and become well-rounded young adults. VIP Dance Studio is a warm environment, and it brings me closer to my community.
My favorite place to eat after school is Last Tortugas Grill. With the most delicious tortas around, this is a frequent hotspot that I and many others love to dine at. Since it's a food truck, you're able to walk around the back and see all of the fabulous employees working the grills in one well-managed space. Coming to Santa Ana, everyone should experience the wide and diverse food trucks we have to offer. In my opinion, Last Tortugas is one of the best food trucks around. I would personally recommend anyone looking for good food to give them a visit. You cannot afford to miss this little-known city treasure.
Whether you're in the mood for unique and savory cuisine, the opportunity to expand your record collection, or to make new connections and explore the city, Santa Ana has a wide variety of businesses that inspire and invite excitement. It's important to be mindful of our purchasing decisions and remember to invest money back into our community. Investing in local businesses helps create a thriving city based on shared opportunity. That's why the Santa Ana Youth Commission supports the citywide effort to remind residents to shop local and shop Santa Ana.
Good evening. Good evening. Could everybody sit, please, for a moment? I would like to call this Planning Commission meeting of May 13, 2019, to order. Madam Secretary, please take role.
Commissioner Benavides.
Present.
Commissioner Rivera.
Present.
Commissioner Alderetti. Vice Chair Contreras Leal.
Here.
Chair McLaughlin.
Present.
Commissioner Conno.
Present.
Chair Nguyen.
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you. Would everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Before we get started, I'd just like to say that tonight's agenda is very full. We have a lot of different activities going on on this agenda, and we're trying to get it done in an expeditious manner, so if any way you could help us with that, we appreciate it. We'll now go on to public comments. Does a member of the public have any comments on a non-agenda item? If you filled out a card and made a request, please come forward at this point in time. I believe I have one from Jim Kendrick.
Good evening, Commissioners. Let me just make it short and sweet. I attended the last council meeting, and I was very shocked. It's time to get that general plan done. And first of all, developers shouldn't have to keep going back and forth between the Planning Commission and your planning and the council. Parking again, we want to talk about it. Council was tied against because the council's not full. Council is tied up on a 6-3-3 vote all the time now because Ward 4 is not full. So here we are going back. Developers are being tied up on decisions made here at the Planning Commission because we're in a quagmire. We need to get our standards in order when all development comes before you. And developers are busting their whatevers in compliance with what we have. And it's not fair to developers to keep running through the quagmire here at the city to get their projects through. We are a city, and we want to be a city. You do own your due diligence to make that happen and get it to the council. And the council's now, again, in a quagmire because Ward 4 is not full. So tonight, there's a lot of things coming before you, and there's a lot of great projects coming before you. And again, I've looked at every one of those projects coming before you tonight, and they're great projects. And I think you, in due diligence, give the developers their fair share shake tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Does anyone else have any public comments at this time? Hearing none will close the public comments, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. At this time, the commission would consider the approval of the minutes of April 22, 2019.
So moved.
We have a second. Second, thank you. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? At 6 with one absence. The next, we have a motion to consider the absence of Eric Alderetti.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, David? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At 6-0, Eric Alderetti absent. Move on to the business calendar. The formal action of the Planning Commission shall become effective after a 10-day appeal period unless the City Council holds a public hearing on the matter. Then, the formal action will become effective on the day following the hearing and the decision by the City Council. An appeal from the decision or requirement of the Planning Commission must be filed with the clerk of the council and a copy sent to the Planning Department within 10 days of the date of the commission's action. The appeal may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. First item on our calendar for hearing today is the conditional use permit number 2019-13 to allow drive-through window service, conditional use permit number 2019-14 to allow after-hours operation, and number 2019-17 to allow walk-up window service for the new restaurant, In-N-Out Burgers, located at 1815 North Bristol Street. At this point in time, the Planning Department has requested that we continue this item until the 28th. Do we have a motion to continue this item?
Most continuums.
Okay, second.
Second.
Second from Cynthia. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 6-0, Eric Alderetti absent. We are now also going to do a change in the agenda, and that is we're going to move up item 6 to the next position. Item 6, amendment application of 2019-02, conditional use permit of 2019-12, and variance number 2019 with properly located at 1904 West First Street, 711. Before you get started, I'd like to... We have a few more changes here. Note, the recommendation on this matter will be forwarded to the City Council for final determination. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please fill out a request from the Secretary of Comments, R. Does the commission have any questions? Should the commission have any question to staff? Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication?
We have not.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Plan Commission. This is a request to construct the new 711 convenience store and gas station located at 1904 West First Street. This is an aerial showing more or less the proximity of the location in terms of Santa Ana. The project site's indicated by the right triangular as depicted on the aerial map, and it's located at the southwest corner of Daisy and First Street. As shown, it's primarily surrounded by commercial uses to the west, east, north, and a vacant lot to the south. There are some residential units to the east of the property as well. Most of the commercial uses, as shown, are auto repair services, and you do have a restaurant to the west of the site. The site's approximately 70,000 square feet, and it was developed back in 1960 as a drive-in restaurant and has been operating since then as an eating establishment. The last tenant was Don... Antojizos Don Chepe, and they actually vacated the site back in 2016, so it has been vacant since. This is an image of the southeastern corner of the property, just showing the existing conditions of the restaurant. In terms of project analysis, the proposed project does comply with the Santa Ana Municipal Code regulations pertaining to the C2 development standards, with the exception of a request for one additional variance sign that I'll go over shortly. So as proposed, you do have the 2,480-square-foot convenience store being proposed at the southeast corner of the property... I'm sorry, southwest corner of the property, and then a 810-square-foot gas station canopy that will accommodate two fueling stations that will accommodate up to four vehicles at a time. And the project site also does accommodate a total of 10 parking spaces, with one of them being ADA compliant. So this next image shows more or less the circulation of the proposed site. The driveways off of Daisy are being limited in terms of the access. There will be only access to right in, right out, and left in only, so no left-out turning vehicles will be allowed at this project location. In terms of one of the applications, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow one additional monument on-site. The current co-re requirements allows for one maximum of one monument side for this particular project site based on the square footage. The applicant is proposing to install two monument signs, one off of First Street and the other one off of Daisy Avenue. Staff has added some conditions of approvals to limit the size of these two monument signs. Particular, one of the concerns was the one-off Daisy Street, and that one's being limited to a maximum of four feet just due to the fact that it is adjacent to some single-family residential units to the east of the property. This other image shows the proposed monument sign option 2. So option 1 allows them to have two monument signs. Option 2 basically is stating what's allowed per code. So if the applicant does design the monument sign like this V-L-shaped monument design, they could comply with the Santa Ana Municipal Code. But again, as part of the application, the applicant is requesting for approval of variance to allow one additional monument sign. Then, one of the other concerns that staff does have based on the proposed site plan is the location of the trash enclosure. The way it's currently being designed does have some... Or does potentially can create some issues in terms of visibility as well as creating a hiding place. So one of the conditions of approval is that the applicant resubmit a site plan to relocate the location of the proposed trash enclosure. This is just an elevation of the proposed 711 convenience store. So the top portion is the front elevation that will be facing the street, and then the bottom one, it's the rear elevation that faces the vacant lot to the south of that. The canopy elevations were not included as part of this PowerPoint presentation, but they were attached to your staff report. And the design of the canopy also does have this contemporary architectural Spanish style and does incorporate some of the base layer as well as the same roofing tile design. So as part of this application, the applicant is requesting an amendment application, which is pretty much a zone change. The current land use destination for the subject property is currently zoned M1, which is light industrial. And what's being proposed is to change it from light industrial to general commercial, and that is consistent with the 1998 general plan land use element that was approved by the city. In addition to that request, the city is requesting to modify the zones of the surrounding properties from M1 to C2. And then you do have one particular property to the left of the subject property that's currently zoned at C1, which will be changed to C2. Again, that will be consistent with the general plan land use element that was adopted back in 1998. Lastly, the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow the operations of 24 hours. And that is more or less consistent with some other 711s that we have in the city, but other businesses along First Street. And we do have two convenience stores and gas stations located at the intersection of Fairview and First Street that have these type of operations, and they're open 24 hours as well. As part of this application, a mitigation negative declaration was prepared to comply with CEQA. And in terms of the environmental factors, most of them came with no impacts, unless insignificant impacts, with the exception of biological resources, geology soils, noise, transportation hazards, and hazardous materials. Those particular environmental factors do require mitigation measures that were attached as part of Exhibit 10. With that, staff is recommending that the Plan Commission recommend to the City Council approve an adoption of mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, Environmental Review Number 2017-140, amendment application number 2019-02, conditional use permit number 2019-12 as conditioned, and variance application number 2019-01 as conditioned. That concludes my presentation. I'll refer to answering any of your questions.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions of staff?
Sure. Thank you. Couple of questions. The application here is not requesting alcohol, sale of alcohol, from what I understand from the report, staff report, that it's prohibited?
Correct. That's correct.
And what would be... What makes it so that it's currently prohibited? And is that something that the applicant can, if approved, that the applicant can come back and potentially in the future, request ABC?
So based on current co-regulations that pertain to establishing and selling alcohol, this particular property does not qualify because it is in close proximity to another convenience that currently already sells alcohol?
Would they at some point be able to approach a city for variance of some sort?
No. So they cannot apply for a variance based on distance requirements. Variances are only applicable to development standards.
I have a few other questions, but I'll go ahead and...
Go ahead. I'll finish.
Well, I'm curious. I don't know if we're going to have any public... Any members of the public speak, so I will... I will hold off for now, see if any other Commissioners have any comments, hear any comments from the public, and then I'll follow up with my questions at that point.
Cynthia?
So I'm looking at the 6 and 15 of the conditions, number 6 and 15 on 6-33, and 15 talks about having a television system inside for the... Inside the premises. And number 6 talks about meeting with the police department to come up with a safety plan. Will they not also have the ability of those recordings on the premises as well? Or is it... Why is it only for inside?
They will require to provide both, so they need to submit a plan to the police department, and they should require surveillance cameras for the exterior as well.
Because that's not detailed. It is for the inside, but not for the outside. Six just says they'll come up with the safety plan, so I think that it would be good to detail it out like we did in 15, but that's included.
We do have an ordinance that the police department regulates in terms of safety, so they will have to actually comply with that ordinance section as well that does require that surveillance system to be to the exterior as well.
Any other questions of staff? I guess the only question I have is... Has to do with the fact that it's a... They're going for 24 hours, and they're looking for two sets of... Two monument signs, and I would imagine it's also adjacent to a single-family neighborhood. Is there going to be some issue relative to the lights of the signage being on for 24 hours?
So based on the aerial photo, there are some single-family homes to the east of the subject property. The monument sign that's being proposed more or less aligns to the auto repair services to the east of the property. The lighting for the particular property is required to be illuminated downwards, so it will not create any blight issues to the surrounding vicinity.
And my understanding was that there was some effort made to get from two to one? Is that... But the recommendation is still to have two?
Correct. So there's two options that this body could take. Option 1 is approve the variance to allow them to have two monument signs, or deny the variance application and have the applicant comply with the city's current regulations that would allow one monument sign. So if I go back to the site plan, right now, this is basically option 2, which is what is in compliance with the city's regulations.
So the monument sign is the upper right-hand corner?
That's correct. The one at the intersection of Daisy and First.
Looks like an L?
Correct.
And that's considered to be one monument sign?
That is correct.
Okay. David, do you...
Sure.
Do you want to address your questions?
Sure. I have a couple of additional questions. Thank you, Mr. Trump. You know, right now, while we're on this question with regard to the monument sign, what their request, how does it differ from that L-shaped sign there at the... request, how does it differ from that L-shaped sign there at the top right?
It doesn't much. So the applicant actually requested to have two additional monument signs. There are some state regulations that do require that these convenience stores and service stations allow for the display of the pricing of fuels. So this more or less, either option, based on staff's recommendation, will comply with state regulations.
So where the additional monument sign that you're, that they're requesting, does that show there on that?
Correct. So going back, option one, it's kind of hard to see, but there's two circular areas in purple, and that's the location of the proposed monument signs.
So they're asking for those in addition to or in place of the...
Yeah, so the request is to allow two monument signs instead of one. So option one is two monument signs, one along Daisy and the other one off of First Street. Then option two is one monument sign at the corner intersection, but this wouldn't require variance, only option one requires a variance.
Couple of follow-up, follow-up questions. With the fueling station that's being proposed, what types of impact, just south of that, what type of impact will that have, or does that have to the soil, to the surrounding area long-term? And I, one is, I'm just interested in getting information with regard, getting some information with regard to that. The other is just south of that, it's currently a city property, Daisy and Walnut. That property's in, under the E&amp;A exclusive negotiating agreement with a community group that's looking to turn that property potentially into a micro farm. So you'd be potentially growing fruits, vegetables at that location, just adjacent to potentially a fueling station that's being proposed, being considered tonight. So do we have any type of information as to, you know, the impacts to soils?
So as part of the project, they went through the environmental analysis, and there's no impacts that were identified that it would have. There are some mitigation measures to assist mitigating any potential impacts in the future, but in terms of the actual underground storage tanks, they do need to comply with state regulations for that. And the applicant's also here, as well as a property owner and the business operators, and they have more information regarding that.
I would be interested in hearing from them a bit more about that. However, before getting to that, going back to Vice Chair, Vice Chair's comment with regard to the security plan, which is condition number six, mentioned that there would be a security plan approved by the police department. And there's a reference of, on condition 15, of specifically spelling out surveillance or closed-circuit television system that captured, that would capture events inside the premises. I would, I think a simple fix there is to include recording events inside and outside the premises, just by simply adding those. So that would be, if we get there, if there's a motion, if we get that, something that I would recommend for our, for us to add. Additionally, with regard to this, specifically speaking to the security, I'm quite familiar with this, this, this location. I've, I live about 10 blocks perhaps from there. This is the way that I actually, I just drove right past it to be able to come here to the meeting, and so I know the history of that, that specific location and the area. If you go back just a couple of slides to the aerial, just south, there's a city lot there, Daisy and Walnut, the one that I referenced a bit ago, just across the street to the southwest, that building there, it's a county social services building, so it's where general relief services are provided. And that site there, that's now empty, it was previously the Orange County Rescue Mission Site. And then just north of that, it was previously Don Chip, Don Chip is most recently and prior to that, it was at Taquerias Guadalajara. Both, I believe, operated 24 hours. That, that area, so I want to mention that I'm glad to see that there is some investment being considered and potentially a development of the site, because it has, it is blighted and has been for a couple of years, boarded up and, and graffitied, and it's, so it's an eyesore currently. However, over the years, it's not just currently been an eyesore, it's been troublesome a number of years back. It's that both the Rescue Mission Site and then the site that we're discussing tonight has been a gathering place for folks for illicit activities, loitering. Homeless have gathered there still now, every so often. Drug sales and use has been taking place in that, in that area for years, for some time. Part of the reason why the city decided to acquire that, the Rescue Mission Site. And with regard to the, the security plan, I'm glad that there is one here, but I think it does need to be more specifically called out, as we ref, that the, as is pointed out in the aerial here, there are single-family homes directly across the street. They have been negatively impacted by some other loitering and other activities that have taken place there. So if we're going to consider this, this use particularly a 24-hour, for my commissioners, I would say that we would heighten the security to ensure that, to mitigate and address any of that, those activities that have been taking place in that area for some time. Frankly, I think part of that challenge for the previous restaurants there that were, that tried to operate and then were not able to be successful and ended closing, I think has been part of these issues of the loitering and drugs and other things that have been taking place there. So security, specifically security, a security guard is something that I would...
Did we want to open the public hearing first and then bring all this back?
If that's, that probably makes sense. Yeah.
Is that fine? Okay. So at this point in time, we'll open for public hearing. I do have a number of cards on this item. Jerry, I'm going to need your help if we could, because we're going to need translation. But I'd like to start first with the applicant, maybe if we can get the applicant up here, some of the questions that are being raised right now. Maybe the applicant has a good answer for us. How's that?
Good evening, sir. Thank you very much to the Planning Commission for your consideration of our, of our change in time slot and on the agenda item. My name is Ben Stechler. I am a certified planner, and I work for Fiedler Group, who is the engineering firm of record. We are the applicant as representative for 7-Eleven, who is the applicant themselves. We'd like to thank staff for all their hard work over the past couple of years, trying to get us to this stage right now where we could be before you and actually get consideration for our project, so that we could alleviate the blight at this corner. We do have a couple of comments that, staff did a great job of presenting the project. There's a few clarifications that I can offer based off of, off of questions that I've heard already, as well as some, some questions that I have of you and/or requests on behalf of 7-Eleven itself. As far as the site security, which is the most recent thing that was discussed, 7-Eleven operates where there will be cameras under the canopy, facing at each of the fueling positions. They operate with cameras on the building facing out towards the streets and their parking area, and their entire premises is covered by exterior cameras. These cameras record high-definition. They save their footage for 30 days and cooperate with the police department in case there's anybody, any nefarious activity in the area. The police are free to come in and request to see the footage, and they will, they will allow that to happen with no problem. They have, in other cities, actually helped the police department because of their footage and the high definition that it is. There have been cars driving by that had created an issue somewhere else and were going by, and because of the high definition of the security cameras themselves, they were able to not only identify the car, but identify the license plate and apprehend the people who had committed crimes elsewhere, not just on our property. Or their properties, I should say. And they also have the, the security cameras in, inside the stores, in the sales area, in the back room, in the coolers, just about everywhere within their store, other than the restrooms. They cover the, the store itself in order to make sure that, that there's no possibility that anybody's committing a crime, and if they do, that they get caught on camera while they do it. And that is also recorded on a DVR system and saved for 30 days. The employees of a 7-Eleven have two different types of silent alarm monitoring. One, it's actually in their pocket, it's like a remote control, but it's a little push button. And so if they're ever anywhere on the site, and they feel that there's some activity that the police need to be involved with, they can reach in their pocket and push a button, and that sends a signal back to their control system inside the store, and it sends a request to the police department directly for a unit to come out. They also have at their, at their front counter, a button similar to that, where the cashier can push that button and request the same thing, so it's like a silent alarm, or it is a silent alarm, I'm sorry. And they have the ability to control cooler doors, but that's for areas where they're doing alcoholic beverage sales, so I don't think that that would be installed here since we are not going to be doing alcoholic beverage sales. We do understand the, the codes within the city of Santa Ana and the restrictions thereon. We do understand the proximity of both the residential community to the southeast, as well as to the other sellers that are nearby, and we understand that that is a, a code restriction. We have not requested that, and we do not plan to request that because of the codes of the city of Santa Ana, and we respect that. Beyond that, there were some items in the staff report that we are questioning a little bit of. One of them is the circulation pattern, and we understand that that's, we think that that's a misunderstanding of, of the conclusion section of the traffic impact analysis, which we completed for this project. The recommendation section and the conclusion section actually say something slightly different than one another. Where we reached out to our traffic consultant earlier today, because this, this staff report was released at about 5:30 PM on Friday, so we didn't have an opportunity to do it until today. Unfortunately, our traffic engineer was out on vacation until tomorrow, so we couldn't get a clarification from him, but we will get that as soon as we can and enter that into the staff. The question that we have, though, is for consideration of the southerly driveway on Daisy. Right now, there's a limitation that people coming out of the store, exiting onto Daisy from the southerly driveway, we understand the northerly driveway is right in, right out, and we voluntarily marked it as such on our site plans. But for the southerly driveway, we would request that people leaving the site be allowed to go north, make a left out of the southerly driveway and go up to First Street, rather than going down and being required by the, the requirements in the code, or I mean in the staff report, and going straight down towards the single-family residences that are behind us, and to the south, south and southwest, or south and southeast, I'm sorry. So that's one consideration that we'd like to present to you, if you could make a recommendation going forward for approval, if you could include something in there that allows either our, our revision of that during the next month before the, the tentatively scheduled city council meeting. And/or, you know, we understand that city council will make the ultimate decision, we have to make that request of them as well. So that's one thing that we'd like to bring up right now. The conditions of approval for the conditional use permit itself for the 24-hour operation, condition approval number four, we believe that that's the one to relocate the, the trash enclosure. The current location for the trash enclosure was actually a recommendation from staff last year sometime while we were in design review. We put it there, we identified that it was going to possibly be a accepted issue, and then staff insisted that they needed pedestrian access off of, off of Daisy, and that that's where they wanted it to have the pedestrian access off of Daisy. So we complied, and we knew that we would have the surveillance system, we knew that we would have onsite lighting required by code to illuminate, I believe it's a minimum of a one-foot candle on every area of our property itself directed downward, so it faces our property itself. And that area would be, would be lit enough to see anybody and capture them on our surveillance system, so we accepted their proposed location. But we believe, as I said, we got these, these recommendations as of Friday night at 5:30. We believe we found a solution to that. We are checking the code right now, or I had my engineers today start checking the code to make sure, because the trash enclosure is adjacent to something called the HELI tank. The HELI tank and the vent risers are both right next to each other, right next to the trash enclosure on the inside. These, the HELI tank itself is something that's required by the South Coast Air Quality Management District specifically for air quality. And if you're, when you're fueling with gasoline anywhere in California, there's a little rubber nozzle that goes around the, the dispensing nozzle for the fuel. That nozzle captures vapors. Those vapors go back, they're stored and processed in the HELI tank, and then they're released safely through the vent risers per AQMD standards, so that it's something that just helps air quality. And so we have to make sure that where we relocate that trash enclosure and the HELI tank complies with, with building codes and safety codes that are in place right now. But we believe that we can present something to staff before city council that would be a revision, minor revision to meet that, that condition number four of the CUP. Condition number 18 of the CUP is a little bit more problematic for us. That restricts time of deliveries. Condition number 18 is specifically related to saying that between 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM, no deliveries can happen on the site. Last year, while we were in design review, there was an issue with the relocation of the tanks, the underground storage tanks, which there's another question of, and I'll get to that one next. The relocation of the tanks was required by staff to go in between the canopy and the building. When they put it in between the canopy and the building, that impacts operations of the building and the parking of the, of the building for about 20 minutes, maybe half an hour a day, or every few days, depending on the frequency that they have to fill the tanks, when the truck is there and filling those tanks. So having it be between, only be able to be there between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM impacts the ability during the most used time of the day for those parking stalls. So we'd like to request some consideration there, so that perhaps we can have a different time, and we're asking, checking with operations to find out what that time could be, where it could be acceptable to, to the city, as well as to the operations of the store. Beyond that, there is fresh fruits and produce in all new 7-Eleven stores that are standard there, fresh fruits, fresh sandwiches, salads, produce, a variety of different things, fresh baked goods. All of these things are typically delivered on a daily basis from a, it's a medium-sized truck, like a box truck. That truck, it comes in the early morning hours to make the deliveries. The loading zone for that truck is actually adjacent to the western property boundary, the northwestern property boundary on the site plan, and is right off of First Street. We would request as well that that truck be allowed to come in and, and provide the fresh fruits, fresh produce, fresh salads, fresh sandwiches, things like that, that can be offered during that day, because they, they bring those in every day, fresh for consumers to come in and have some, some quality food that makes it more of a neighborhood market than just a convenience store. So those are the conditional use items that we had a question with. I did mention that we would talk about the, the storage tanks themselves. The underground storage tanks are regulated by multiple codes, National Fire Protection Agency, California Fire Code, California Building Code. These codes require for a double-wall tank system and, and monitoring of that system to make sure if there's any leaks, it's caught and it's fixed right away. The double-wall tank system means that the inner tank is what stores the fuel, the outer tank is there, so that if there is ever a rupture of the inner tank, the outer tank can capture any leaks that happen from the tanks themselves. tank can capture any leaks that happen from the tanks themselves. The monitoring system happens on the lines that go from the tank to the, to the dispensers, um, and around the dispensers, to make sure that if there's any leaking or anything in one of the, the connection points, or anywhere there's a fuel loss, or a, a change in the pressure within that, that system, it is caught and it is fixed, uh, in order to prevent uh, any, any issues with the groundwater or the soil contamination on that site. And this has actually been, uh, the double-wall tank system was started in the nineteen nineties or, or required to be modified for all service stations since the nineteen nineties, and has been continuously improved upon by the state of California and the regulators for fueling stations, um, specifically, so that we have better, uh, control over the systems and less contamination and less, uh, uh, issues with any of our, our products, uh, contaminating soils for anybody, uh, surrounding the neighborhood and/or the water table that's below. Um, there's also a condition of approval in the mitigation monitoring reporting program that requires us to do geotechnical review and submit a geotechnical report. In that report, it would say, uh, uh, would evaluate where the groundwater system is and, and give us any requ, recommendations, uh, specifically, so that we can make sure that we don't have any issues there as well.
Ben, is there more to what you, you need to talk about, because we've gone on for quite some time on this, and it, you know, I'm not sure where we're going with, you kind of questioned some of the things that are going on with regards to what's been agreed upon and not agreed upon with the planning department. Um, I just like to...
Oh, yes, sir. I just have a, a...
Bring this to a conclusion.
Two, two more items, I'm sorry. I was trying to respond to questions as well, uh, in advance, as well as, as cover my questions and, and...
Okay.
The variance, uh, that was requested, we're happy to consider option two, we'd never been presented that until today, that it was a feasibility to have an L-shaped sign, so we're considering that right now. Um, but we do need, uh, at a minimum to meet visibility requirements, if, if we went with the option of two signs, um, we would need, instead of the four-foot or five-foot signs with twenty-square-foot limitations, we would need, um, six-foot high and thirty-two square feet in order to comply with visibility requirements there. Um, and/or we would just ask that, that, uh, per the size of our, of our, um, frontages, that we would be allowed to comply with code, because the recommendations of staff is, is much less than code would allow as, as general. Um, that, that concludes my items for, that I had on discussion, and I'd like to be able to be here to, uh, answer any questions you may have.
Does the commissioner have any question of Ben?
Jim, and I do have a question.
Go ahead.
It seemed to me the, the applicant have raised some issue regarding to the trash enclosures and, you know, the, uh, and the delivering hours and so on, it seemed to me the application does not have an agreement with staff regarding the condition use permit with the city. Um, if, if, if have not come to that, I, I strongly recommend that you should continue this item for the, so it's good applicant can work closely with staff and come to agreement before come to us, because it seemed to me that, uh, you keep, um, raising concern and question regarding the condition use permit that's submitted to us for our review and approval.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Gren. Um, I was about to also recommend the same recommendation. At this point, uh, Chair, it may be appropriate to ask if there's any public, um, comment. Um, other than that, we would also recommend that this be continued for at least two weeks, for staff to, uh, discuss all of these, um, questions, uh, and to work with the applicant to resolve this issue, and come back, uh, with the final recommendation.
That's fine. Uh, yeah, and there are public comments, so, um, what I'd like to do is, like I said, Jared, we're gonna need some translation.
Thank you.
Can you do that? And the first person is Maria Torres?
Yo vengo a apoyar la Seven Eleven porque es una oportunidad de tener una tienda las veinticuatro horas, porque se nos puede ofrecer como un Peter Light, o como un Tylenol, o como un galón de leche, ya que las otras tiendas están cerradas, que operan hasta las doce de la noche algunas tiendas.
Hey, Jared?
Maria Torres.
My name is Maria Torres, and I support Seven Eleven, cause they will provide a twenty-four hours convenience store where I could buy produce, for example, Tylenol, Peter Light, and other goods.
Pues sería todo. Sería todo, que yo estoy apoyando la Seven Eleven, porque que esté cerca de nuestra comunidad y donde estamos, y este, y como le digo, pues nosotros necesitamos algo veinticuatro horas que podamos...
I support this project, and we need a twenty-four hour service convenience store in the area.
Sería todo.
That's it.
Y gracias por...
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you, Maria. Okay. Next is Gloria Torres.
My name is Gloria Torres.
Y vengo a apoyar a que se construya el Seven Eleven.
I am here to support Seven Eleven.
Porque tiene muchas, este, este, que puede uno comprar las veinticuatro horas de, del día, si uno se enferma o...
Because they offer services and goods that you could buy twenty-four hours, and in case you get sick?
Ah, porque, este, hay muchas cosas que puede uno comprar, como leche, en veces que se acabe la noche.
You could buy milk, for example, where you finish it at night?
O, este, a mí me ha tocado también, este, que necesito un, un, ¿cómo se llama? Un suero, un Peter Light, y voy de emergencia y lo compro, y este, estoy de acuerdo que, que se abra ese Seven Eleven y la gasolinera que quieren construir, estoy de acuerdo.
For example, sometimes in emergencies, I need to buy Peter Light for myself, and I agree with the services that Seven Eleven will be providing, as well as the gas station.
Y pues es todo, muchas gracias de, de escucharme, mis, como, este, me gustaría mucho que, que se abriera para la comunidad de nosotros. Thank you.
That will conclude my recommendations, I want to thank the planning commissioners, and I agree and in support of Seven Eleven.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Obardo?
Ah, buenas tardes, honorables commissioners, mi nombre es Sandra Obando, es, este...
Good evening, honorable Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Sandra...
Obando.
Obando.
Estoy aquí para apoyar el proyecto de, del Seven Eleven y la gasolinera.
I am here to support the Seven Eleven convenience store and the gas station.
Ya que nuestra comunidad, pues donde lo quiere edificar es un, un, este, lugar baldío, que en lugar de embellecer nuestra comunidad, pues la, la hace fea.
Repito.
En lugar de apoyar nuestra comunidad, la hace fea.
I think I didn't understand what you're saying.
Okay, ah, este, el lugar donde se va a edificar este proyecto es un lugar baldío.
The location where this is going to be constructed is a blighted area?
Y es un lugar que en lugar de embellecer nuestra ciudad, en la pone, o sea, está fea.
This project will help beautify the city.
Y pues muchas gracias por escucharme, este, ya que, pues como lo vuelvo a repetir, verdad, es un lugar muy feo para mí, que estoy viendo en ese área, este, y este nuevo proyecto pues beneficiaría a nuestra comunidad.
Thank you for listening, again, this project will help improve the, the overall neighborhood, and turns a blighted area into a, um, location that provides services to the community.
Me gusta este proyecto porque, del Seven Eleven, porque va a estar las veinticuatro horas abiertas.
I like this project because it will provide twenty-four hour services.
Y pues, este, habría muchas luces, más seguridad, como está ahorita el área, no está muy bonita, que digamos.
It will provide lighting and security and a pleasant location to look at.
Muchas gracias, y Dios los bendiga, y esperemos que apoyen este nuevo proyecto, del Seven Eleven, gracias.
Thank you, and God bless you, and we wish that you support this project.
Gracias.
Thank you, Sandra. Marisela Garcia, Garcia?
Buenas tardes, buenas noches, mi nombre es Marisela.
Good evening, good night, my name is Marisela.
También yo vengo apoyando para el Seven Eleven.
I am here to support Seven Eleven.
Porque nos hace falta mucho, porque en la noche, para una emergencia, a los pan per, leche, medicina, y luego sándwiches para los niños de la escuela, para un café, chocolate.
Because we need the services that Seven Eleven provides, for example, sandwiches and coffees, as well as snacks for those, for the kids.
Ensaladas.
Salads.
Y pues sí, quisiera que se apoyara eso, y el gasolín que también se pusiera, porque ahí está muy baldío, y está muy grande, y está bien para un Seven Eleven, y está una pura esquina.
I support Seven Eleven as well as the gas station, because it is going to convert a blighted area, and this location is adequate for both the convenience store and the gas station.
Y pues quisiera que nos apoyaran para que pusieran eso, porque sí nos hace falta un Seven Eleven ahí en esquina.
And we wish that you would support this Seven Eleven at this corner.
Para las sodas, hielo, todo eso que, por la calor que se va a venir, y nos hace falta ahí.
For, especially for the drinks, especially for the summer times that's coming up.
Y es todo, gracias.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Marisela.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners.
Yo estoy aquí para apoyar que construyan la Seven Eleven, allí en ese lugar donde está programado, porque es una buena área para todos los personas que viven en esas áreas, y...
I am here to support the construction of the Seven Eleven, as it will benefit the, um, general vicinity.
Para cualquier cosa, pues uno va allí a hacer cualquier compra leve, y pues es recomendable que, que abran esa tienda, porque tiene de todo.
For our needs, this will provide, um, services and goods at a convenient location.
Y yo quisiera que, por favor, apoyen todos para construir ese lugar.
And I'm here to request that this body, um, recommends consideration of approval of this Seven Eleven.
Que yo estoy muy de acuerdo y apoyo el lugar.
I am here in support of the location and project.
Gracias de antemano, y muy buenas tardes.
Thank you, and good afternoon.
Thank you, Galvina. Go ahead.
Este, me gustaría decirle a las señoras que vinieron esta noche, que me da mucho gusto verlas aquí, que tuvieron el valor de venir y dar su posición y representar sus comunidades, especialmente cuando no conocen el idioma y tuvieron ese valor, así que gracias que vinieron. I just wanted to thank the ladies that were here, I thanked them for their courage to come, especially when they don't know the language, and they still came out to represent their community and their families.
Thank you, Cynthia. Um, is it Drew Siccardi? Drew Siccardi, okay. Seema Olson and Chris Galvino?
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Sherry Olson, I'm in support of the project. Um, I, uh, was one of the, uh, community outreach spokesmen for the area, and held the meetings, the community group meetings, and listened to all the neighbors' concern. We held, uh, two meetings in the community, we did the Mallers, um, and we also walked the neighborhoods and met with our neighbors out there. Uh, there, a lot of them were really excited, there were some that had some concerns, and we tried to address all the concerns out there with our neighbors. And, uh, we're, you know, well, you know, happy to be going into this location, and, you know, I've been to the site several times, and I can say it does need some attention. So we'll be, you know, looking forward to cleaning that up and making it a safe area for the community to enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherry. Okay, anyone at this point in time that would like to speak on this item? Hearing none, we're going to keep...
Uh, good evening, Commissioners, my name is Diego Sarate, I'm a resident of San Ana, specifically in that location for the last twenty-three years of my life, um, and I actually do not support the building of the Seven Eleven for various reasons. Um, there was a commissioner, I believe David, uh, mentioned a lot of the concerns that the, um, some of the, uh, committee and, uh, community leaders around the area are concerned, especially the safety component. Um, that area is a very fragile area. Um, growing up myself, I was around the, um, the, when, when there was a homelessness, um, shelter there, um, so I grew up around a lot of, um, drugs, narcotics, prostitution, I remember getting asked for all these, um, services, and obviously, I, I didn't want any of it, cause I'm a, a family member. Um, but, um, also the other component that, um, is really, um, effective in our end is the fact that it is going to create more traffic for us, uh, especially off of, uh, First Street and on Daisy. Um, and again, going back to the fragile component, um, if you guys are aware of the location, maybe about three, four blocks, uh, south, uh, where it's located, uh, it is a lot of apartment complexes, uh, there is a pretty big gang there, and I'm pretty sure you guys are aware of it, um, and there's a lot of trouble that I think is going to create more, uh, less opportunity for a brighter future in my community, at least in my neighborhood. Um, and again, I'm here, uh, representing, I went to all the meetings, the first two meetings that there were, uh, done at the Mondevista Elementary. Um, unfortunately, a lot of the, uh, other individuals that were there, um, were, were also, um, community, uh, members, uh, I believe it was eight of us or nine of us that were there, and we were always against it, I'm surprised they're not here. Um, but again, we're against it, and I don't think this is a, a good thing for my community. And thank you for your time again.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else at this point in time that would like to speak? Excuse me, did, did you fill out a card earlier?
I did not, I'm the property owner.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
I'm sorry.
Come on up, fill it out after, after you complete.
Will do. My name is Chris Rodriguez, I'm the property owner, I just wanted to respond, um, I forget the gentleman's name that just spoke, but, the, uh, the last meeting, it was, him, uh, he was the sole, uh, voice of dissension, there was a couple that lives, uh, the most impacted residential property, uh, just across Daisy, just had some concerns, just about hours of operation and things of that nature, and they were, uh, you know, their concerns were very legitimate, and we addressed them, and spoke to them about that, but I just wanted to comment on the traffic. Uh, there's, there's no use that you can put onto any property on that street that's going to create more traffic. The traffic's already there, it's just, who's going to capture the traffic? There's already forty thousand cars a day on the street, putting Seven Eleven there isn't going to make forty-eight thousand cars a day, same amount of cars. So as far as the traffic impact is concerned, I just want to speak to that, it's no net negative impact, cars are already there. So, um, you know, you'll have to forgive me, I'm just like, kind of responding to a couple things, but, uh, what I can tell you as the owner of the property is, we deal with, uh, the things Mr., uh, Mr. Benavides brought up, that for us, we see a tenant like Seven Eleven going in with twenty-four hour operation as solving the security problem. A store that has, uh, uh, being operated by a company that operates fourteen thousand stores around the world, they're really good operators, they take security very seriously. When you have that many locations, you're... They take security very seriously. When you have that many locations, you're going to have, experience every single type of security measure possible being a retailer. So having lighting, cameras, 24-hour operation solves the problem that I've personally been dealing with for the last three, four years. Homelessness, human defecation, dangers, fires started by homeless. We literally have had two or three arrests on the property, fenced the property. We have people that go there two or three times a week to check for it, clean it out, talk to the law enforcement. We had an issue, I just got a text from my partner literally two hours ago that we had to have people kicked out of the room where the water heater used to be, the water heater's been stolen. Every time we go there, it's just constant, hypodermic needles, pipes, drug paraphernalia. So, you know, the issue is, Seven Eleven's not going to create that problem. Seven Eleven, I think, is going to solve that problem. You know, our, I grew up in Santa Ana, Tustin, unincorporated area, and went to Tustin High, so I spent a lot of my youth shopping, growing up, you know, in these areas. So I've seen it all from 1977 all the way till today. And I think that this street, especially if you look at the zoning plan and changes that the city wants along that street, somebody's got to be the first shoe to drop. And I've been doing, you know, I've been in commercial real estate for 22 years. You got to get that first tenant on the street to show the other tenants that development on that street is viable. And this would be the first shoe to drop. And I think that as that happens and as the zoning changes, you start seeing property values increase. That's going to be good for everybody, the community, sales tax revenue for the city, but...
Can you wrap?
Yeah, yeah. But the first shoe has to drop and we'd really like to be that. And I do think that Seven Eleven solves the security issue that Mr. Benavides and the previous speaker brought up because having a tenant there is better than no tenant.
Appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so having, hearing no more for the public hearing at this point in time. We will continue it until the May 28 meeting. Is that acceptable from staff's point of view? I will need a motion to continue the meeting to May 20, continue this action item until May 28.
Second.
Cynthia's seconding it. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero. One absence with Eric Alderetti. Thank you.
Para las señoras que están aquí, el tema de hoy se va a extender hasta el 28 de mayo. Entonces ahora no vota.
Thank you for your time. Okay, now is the time to consider item number two, Regional Plan Signing Program, Sign Program, number 2018-01 for the Discovery Cube of Orange County located at 2500 North Main Street. Note, decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 days of the decision of any interested party in the group. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come up and fill out a request to speak. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Before beginning, do any of the Commissioners have anything to disclose regarding this item? I do. I did talk with representative of the Discovery Cube with regards to this item, Sean Fitzgerald. And it was via telephone. And we discussed the matter at hand. Anybody else? That's it? Vince?
Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners, good evening. The action before you is a regional plan sign program for the Discovery Cube of Orange County. The project before you is a request to adopt a regional plan sign program. And within this program, we're looking to allow a variety of signage, essentially some permanent wall signs near their entry, temporary banners, and some rooftop inflatable signs. And as part of the action, there's some signage that was approved under the zoning document that if this application's approved, will remove that signage from the SD. So essentially what they're asking for is what you've seen for the past 20 years out there at the Discovery Cube. Now call it the Cube to be short. I think most of you know the location there. It's right there on North Main Street, just off the I-5 freeway. It's that highlighted in yellow there. Discovery Cube's the bottom right, then it goes northwest and there's a parking lot that goes under the Broadway Bridge. So that's the Discovery Cube location. Little bit of background on regional plan sign programs and Discovery. This project was a former warehouse building. It was a moving company building on Main Street for years. Discovery came in in late 90s. I believe it was 1999. I believe it was their 20th birthday this year, maybe 21. And they came in and bought this building, redeveloped it. It's a small little museum and it's just grown exponentially in popularity. And they've expanded on the location a couple of times, amended their sign program, amended their zoning a couple of times to add in a theater and other types of activities there. So they're going very well right now and they are a regional draw. So within the zoning document that was approved 20 years ago, there's the SD, specific zoning, which had some signage requirements in that document there. And what was included in that document was an electronic sign that you see right now on the I-5 freeway. It's kind of an L-shaped sign. And they also had some monument sign as well as some banners on Main Street. And those are the signs that are going to be removed, the monument sign and banners on Main Street. So what happened here, they have a sign program as part of their facility there. In 2014, this body and a city council approved a document called the Regional Plan Sign Program, which recognizes unique uses in the city. Those could be the Main Place Mall. They have a couple of digital signs at Main Place Mall. The Tom's Trucks, the site there on Grand Avenue, and museums such as Discovery Science Center. So that program was developed with this type of use in mind and specifically Discovery Science Center was also in our mind as well. We developed this program. So again, what they can do, they can create, essentially they come to the city with a unique sign program and we negotiate and try to find a program that meets our needs as well as their needs. So this document here, it's also in your staff report, shows the location of seven signs that we're talking about. Sign number two and number seven are existing. Two is that digital sign, the old-fashioned digital sign they have right there facing the I-5 freeway. Seven is their welcome and their ticket sign. The rest of them are banners that you've seen throughout the years here if you've driven by this location. Number one's a banner on the Cube itself. Number three, four, and five are temporary banners that change out quarterly or semi-annually depending on type of exhibits, the specific activities that go on. Actually, four I believe is the Bubble Fest. It's a rooftop sign as well as a banner that describes their most popular activity, which is the Bubble Fest event that occurs every spring break in the city here. And then sign six is a sign facing Main Street and then seven is their front entrance, which is permanent signs. So I just have three signs I want to talk to you about briefly because I believe the applicant will kind of talk about these as well. And you have all the signs in your packet there in front of you that was presented to you. But sign three is a banner sign that staff is recommending and one of the conditions is they remove it. And the reason we're asking to be removed is that, as you can see, it conflicts with some architectural enhancements of the building there. And this sign has been up for years, about 20 years, but just in looking at our own sign program, it makes some sense to kind of let the building speak to the community, let the architectural uniqueness show and not have that banner at this location. So that's one of the conditions that you have inside, that's for you to consider tonight. Sign four is a Bubble Fest banner. Again, that comes up for three weeks a year. Bubble Fest is a rooftop inflatable. Then below is a banner. It changes every year depending on when spring break is, as the date changes. And part of their ask that I believe will come before you tonight is looking at maybe some potential for maybe a couple of other rooftop inflatables. So this is sign number four. And then sign number five, it used to be their sponsor banner. It was Microsemi, it was Stanbridge, and there was a third banner out there, identifier there. Questionable if it's even allowed by KATRAN standards, so we're taking the cautious route and says you can't have that out there. Signs have to comply with, they have to advertise something occurring on the premises. And if they do, then they're exempt from KATRAN standards. So this banner will be a banner that advertises, identifies some type of unique exhibit that's coming in in the near future. Could be something about ice, something about power, just all different types of potential there. But this one here is going to replace the sponsored banner at this location. Analyzing the project here, we take a look and see the three findings we have to make and include them as a consistent in size and scale. You know, the signage is safe. It's going to be creating any kind of hazards. And the answer is no. All these signs proposed are going to be all designed to be not hazardous to the community or to the motor and public. These signs help enhance and market Discovery Cube, again, a unique regional draw. And this types of signage helps them separate their message because they change programs and they chase exhibits quite often. So this type of banner is good for them to constantly change every three or four months on the go. As I mentioned earlier, they're going to relinquish some rights to a couple of signs in the SD. A monument sign and four banners on Main Street will be removed. They won't put those up with this project here. And then we've been talking to the Discovery about, hey, what about digital signs? That seems the kind of sign that's out there. They love the idea. They want to explore the idea. It's a funding issue. Basically, the funding's not there right now, but they think in the next three to five years, they'll be coming back before this body with some kind of unique signage, in which case these banners may go away and we'll have some kind of digital sign out there. But that's for the future there. And wrapping it all up, our staff has reviewed it and recommends approval of the sign program as conditioned in your reports. Thank you. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Does the Commissioner have any questions of staff?
Yes, I do.
Ken, go ahead.
Vince, the why the applicant does not want to consider the digital signage instead of regular banner? Because of cost, because of the regulation, or what do I, they did not go to digital? Because to me, digital signage, they can change it whatever as they like and also with new technology nowadays, you can put a very nice graphic on it and change constantly, then be more animated and so on and more attractive to children.
Absolutely. Yeah, that is an option they want to explore down the road. Again, it came down to cost. They're, it's a nonprofit organization. Funding, takes time to do funding. Don't need to identify this as a program they want to achieve and then in conversations you're looking about five years to be able to achieve the funding to put in these digital signs, which are, you know, close to a million dollars or plus for these types of signs. So that is on their radar. We've also talked to them, you know, men's idea about do something with the Cube. Some kind of unique lighting with the Cube also. So we have all kinds of options that we have. It's funding. It comes down to funding. So this is something temporary for them. Again, because they change out exhibits, the banners can come and go and display and convey what's happening at the facility.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
First of all, with respect to the document that we provided, it talked about the fact that all the banners had to have a Santa Ana seal on it, City of Santa Ana seal. And you keep on saying, and I think it's true, you know, the Discovery Cube is considered a regional facility, something that's visited by the county, throughout the county and outside the county. And I'm just wondering, you know, what benefit does the Discovery have of having to change out all their signage to come up with some kind of signage that has the seal of Santa Ana?
Sure, right. And I believe we changed the condition, I'm looking here. Condition number five says that their digital sign that they have right now, most of you recognize it as a very old-fashioned digital sign, they will identify and welcome people to Santa Ana on that message right there because they can just type it in and the information can go across the screen and say, "Welcome to Santa Ana," or "Discovery Cube at Santa Ana." So that will be, that condition five says, "Put it in that digital sign, not on the banners."
So it's in the digital sign?
Yes, sir.
Because originally it was on the banners.
Correct. That was our initial thoughts, was put it somewhere on the banner, like the Cube for instance, what's up there is very prevalent. So we've gone from that and put it as the digital sign.
There was a huge cost associated with that.
There is.
Signs and everything else.
There is.
The PSA aspect, everybody I think is in favor of the PSA aspect of doing that, but that is also tied with the digital side of it, or is it going to be something that's going to be done on what I call analog or just printed?
Well, right now, condition 10 says they need to make it available for PSA if we ask for it. So we could say, we'd like to put up a banner of, you know, recognizing the planning commission winning an award or something like that. So we would pay for it. We'd do all the efforts and put it up and they would have to agree to let us install it on the building. That's what condition 10 says. And I believe that may be something they bring up as well tonight.
Right. So the city bears the cost of the PSA for that, for the cities?
That's correct. The city's banner.
And any other organization that's accepted as a PSA?
Right.
They will pay for the, they'll pay the cost?
That's correct.
Won't cost the Cube anything?
That's correct.
In all the respect, we're dealing with a nonprofit and I think, you know, it's a challenge these days to keep, you know, funding things like that. And that's something I think would be fair to everybody.
Right. And this body knows, this is a very standard comment on all regional plan sign programs, but what you've seen is the digital signs. That's why it's so easy. The mall has them, Tom's Trucks has them. They all, it's easy to put them in that, in the digital signs. This was a little bit different, a little bit different.
On a digital sign, like Commissioner Winn said, it's 20 minutes, it's done, it's over.
Yeah.
On something that's on a canvas, on a vinyl, it's two or three days, four days, 10 days type thing, so.
Yeah.
With a lot of handling in between.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much we'll use it. We just want the opportunity to be able to put something up there just in case. Knowing we also have the mall next door that advertises for us as well. They have the requirement for the PSAs.
All right. Thanks Vince. Does anybody else have any? Felix? No?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you Vince. Okay. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Okay, we will now open up for public hearing. Would the applicant at this point in time like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman and the Commissioners. I'm Kelly Preston. I am the Chief Operating Officer for Discovery Cube. I've been with the Discovery Cube for 16 years. I want to thank you for the time tonight to be able to speak on our planned program. Also want to thank the planning department. The staff has been amazing. Appreciate their time and particularly our contact Vince, very flexible with our conversations, ongoing. I'd also like to point out that Discovery Cube's been in the community of Santa Ana, which we call home, for almost now 21 years and we appreciate the opportunity. We've enjoyed a very professional and productive working relationship and this process that we've gone through has been no exception. We look forward to the future. We want to thank the staff's guidance. It's been able to reach a full agreement in all but maybe three conditions that I'd like to speak on tonight. With respect to condition number eight, the rooftop inflatables, we would respectfully request that we are allowed to continue to display rooftop inflatable a maximum of just four months out of the year. For over 17 years, we've had promoted our seasonal exhibits with inflatables directly themed to those exhibits that we have inside. This provides a highly impactful and cost-effective marketing tool for the Cube and as a nonprofit, it's very invaluable.
That's condition number nine.
Oh, pardon me. Pardon me. They did change. And I want to be clear, condition eight, removing the location of sign number three, did that change? Or condition 11?
Sign number three?
Yes.
That's condition number nine.
So condition number nine, removing sign location number three. We respectfully request to keep this signage location. The signage location has also been in use for 17 years. And it provides this amazing audience reach to those who travel on the I-5 freeway and that, you know, again, as a marketing tool and it's invaluable for the Cube. And the last condition, I believe is 12, is the PSAs. Want to confirm that? 10? Condition 10. We are fully supportive of this, this condition. And we're happy to work with the city to support all local causes that are very near and dear to all of us. I only wanted to mention this, that this condition to clarify that we do not have a programmable video board that is customizable as Tom's Truck or the Main Place Mall. As such, we like to provide a host of maybe more simple approaches that we are more flexible to do. We like to promote and offer up instead of a banner or something that maybe comes on our property, but a little bit, again, flexible, the Discovery Cube website to promote PSAs, Discovery Cube social media, which would be Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter. Our digital video screens inside the Discovery Cube lobby where we can promote to the PSAs. We do promote our membership and community newsletters. We'd offer that up also as reasonable. And then as seasonal flyers, this is where we may have a cost from the city to support, but we'd also hand those out in our parking lot to the guests that park here. So a little bit more flexible option since we don't, at this time, we do in the future wish to, but we don't have this time, a digital board, we would like to offer that up. So again, thank you for this opportunity tonight and I will welcome any questions.
Does the Commissioner have any questions, Kelly?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
In regard to number seven, why was it that they have to, why did we add this exception to them for the inflatables?
Was your question, what exception are they asking for?
They said they did not agree with condition number seven. I want to see why it was put, why it was limited, the inflatables that they are putting out there.
Because we just feel that the Bubble Fest inflatable is a unique type of activity that's occurred at this location. Again, they've had it up there for years, so we've accepted the Bubble Fest rooftop inflatable. accepted the Bubble Fest rooftop inflatable. We just think with all the different signage they have on the building, that they may not need any other rooftop inflatables. So what they're asking for is to change that, that condition, or allow them, what it says in the program is that their Bubble Fest will be up for three weeks? For three weeks during spring break, and they're asking for just for four months. Tell other options for other ones, and what the options could be, I don't know. They've had other inflatables in the past over the years, so they've been different variety of inflatables, but, so they're asking for three more months essentially on rooftops.
But to go on Angie's point, my question is that, you know, in the documentation we received, you know, the inflatables were considered to be blight, they blighted, and yet, you know, we can allow one, but the Discovery's asking for like three or four months of having potentially maybe two or three others.
Yes.
Is it really that much blight that we have with that, that we have to concern ourselves with that?
Quite honestly, it's very subjective. I mean, they've had inflatables, again, in the past, and people have noticed them, they've done their, they've done what they're intended to do, they've brought attention to the Discovery and also to staff as well, so.
Cynthia?
Did you receive community complaints about that, or?
No, we have not. Nope.
So what did you guys use to?
Limit them?
That determination that?
The original proposal by the cube was the rooftop inflatable for the Bubble Fest only. Then within the last week, two weeks, they said, hey, we'd like to just consider other inflatables.
What made the Discovery Science Center change their mind?
I imagine they saw the condition and got them thinking about what their future is out there, and what's helped them sell.
Right. We were not aware until we saw the condition, we thought our rooftop inflatables were all approved, because we've been doing it for seventeen years, and then when we saw that it was just deemed solely for Bubble Fest, then we came back to the condition that we would like it as it stands now, that we can put up a rooftop inflatable with any traveling exhibit that comes. Thank you.
I mean, my concern here is, is that, you know, essentially what we're trying to do is clean up our paperwork in some respect, and make sure that everything is being done at this point in time on the building is acceptable. I mean, that's the intent of getting this particular item passed at this point in time, so that everything that they've done, and it's all been done in the past, is now going to be in compliance from a signage perspective for the museum, whether it be the Discovery Museum or some of the other locations. So my question is, why are we taking exception to a number of these items just because? I haven't heard any, any reason or justification that says, we really don't think that this is a safe way of doing things, and this is why we don't have to have, this is why we don't want this sign in this location, you know, it is blight, I mean.
Sure. We're just trying to strike a balance between the building, the amount of signage, and what's not blight, so it's, again, it's subjective, so that's why they proposed this, their signage.
Okay. David?
Sure. To have a question for the applicant, the, with regard to that condition number seven and the inflatables, besides Bubble Fest, what are the other events, or are there inflatables that you have used, and/or that you would propose to use going forward?
No, thank you. We're looking forward to being, well, to bring back Winter Wonderfest. It's our holiday event, and we had an inflatable at that time, it's kind of opposite of our spring break, where we do see a lot of our community come to the cube, and we'd like to be able to put that inflatable back up.
Do you, do you have a, I'm trying to identify the times that you would be requesting. So is it, is it specifically three, is it three months, is it four months, or is there specific times?
Historically, sure, of course, historically, over the last seventeen, eighteen years, we've either, and I want to qualify it, there could be also a traveling exhibit that comes through the summer, that would have an associated traveling, or inflatable. We just, you know, book those out two, three years in advance, so not aware of that, but we, we could use it then also, not only in the holiday, but historically, through the last seventeen-plus years, we've normally had a inflatable up a maximum of four months through the year, so it's just been our history.
Thank you for that. And I would think that the, just a comment now. I understand, I appreciate that staff's asking the questions and some of those, we do need to strike a balance, right? After a while, if something is not, part of what makes the Bubble Fest, for example, or the inflatables, unique and attractive, it's that, it's, it's unique, it's different when you're driving down, when you're walking, when you're driving down either the freeway or Main, you see it, or Broadway, the bridge. If something just becomes static after a while, it's not necessarily something that is unique, it just becomes part of the fabric of what you see, and it's, so if, so that's where I could see that, that balance, that staff's trying to strike between just the aesthetics of our city, and, and yet still trying to work with the attractions in the city, in this case, the Discovery Cube. And with that, you know, I do appreciate also staff's, when I saw that including Santa Ana in the signage was something that was being recommended within the staff report itself, but not, not the condition, that the sign said, these conditions including incorporating Santa Ana into any permanent signage should be installed on the premises, so it's still spelled out in here. I think that's a positive thing, I think that's a good thing. We want to, straight, same, the reason why you have the Los Angeles Angels of Anaheim, you know, Anaheim is there because you want to make sure to stand up, to call out that, this, this, that, in that case, that team and that stadium is within Anaheim, and promote that. I think we want to also, we're proud of Discovery Cube, we're proud of, we've been partners from day one as a city. This is not the first conditional use or permits that we would have been allowing, there's a number of other ones that we have looked at across, you know, over the years, because we want them to succeed, to do well, and so to demonstrate and highlight that partnership by, by branding this as a Santa Ana attraction, I think is a, is a good thing, and we should look to promote that and to call out that partnership. I, and along those lines, on condition ten, says any PSA sign to be installed shall be at the sole expense of the city, I'm not sure exactly if the others, for example, other, at least the ones, the digital ones, at the auto mall and at the Tom's Trucks, I don't know that there's any cost to the city, in fact, that was part of the condition, as I recall, that there would be some branding of the city and.
There's no, there's no cost to the city?
There's no cost for electronic message boards, signs.
So, so I'm curious what?
What, what the intent was, if we were to look at possibly banners, that we would not, we would incur the cost of creating the banners and installation, and not have to place it onto the cube organization for the cost of that.
Where, so that, that's, if there's a fixed cost, I could see that. With regard to, in, in the staff report, there's mention of including incorporating Santa Ana, it doesn't necessarily say Santa Ana seal, but it says the words, Santa Ana to any permanent signage should be installed on the premise, and again, this calls out the permanent signage versus replacing banners and such. Is that still going to be incorporated? It's, it's in the staff report, and the only reference is Santa Ana that I see in the condition, oh, wait a minute. I see number five, actually.
Condition five asks that it be working with the electronic message board, and that could be either through the messaging, or even incorporating something on the reader board, along with where it says Discovery, it could be Discovery at Santa Ana.
Yeah.
You know, I think you are very correct in terms of illustrating the long history the city has with the organization. The organization bring quite a bit of notoriety to our city, and I think it would be proud to be a part of a name, because you do have multiple locations, right, throughout the region, so it might be good to identify this as Discovery Cube at Santa Ana, but, you know, that's something we're flexible to work with. The goal is to, to be a partner, and to help continue to support the cube. As relates to the Bubble Fest, as I mentioned, and, I'm sorry, as Vince mentioned, this was a request by the cube, so that was conditioned that way. At this point, if there's a request for us to look at something differently, I think we need to evaluate that. Of course, the commission is free to make its own decision, but we haven't seen what the proposal in just terms of time, as well as what, what are the inflatables that would look like. So we would request with the opportunity to review that before making a recommendation.
And last question, thank you, Mr. Plan Director, I do have for that, the applicant, condition number nine, you call that, that condition currently says that sign number three is to be removed, and I believe that the applicant is requesting that we strike that condition. Can you speak to that, why you would, why that request, and just help us understand a bit? Staff was clear, I think that it's, as I understood it, the, currently this is a temporary banner, however it's been there for, for quite some time, so it's, it's gone from essentially temporary to, I think, a static long-term, and staff's suggestion is that it attracts from the, the building itself, the architecture and such, however you're requesting that, that it stay, can you speak to that some more?
Sure. We, I might stand corrected, we reviewed the sign ordinance, and we didn't really see anything that said if something was not architecturally pleasing regarding a sign, I understand, and I would appreciate blight or something that's imposing, but we've had a sign in that location, which there's six hundred and fifty thousand cars a day that goes there, so the opportunity for a nonprofit to market, again, is invaluable. We've had a sign there almost seventeen, eighteen years, and it is up maybe six months a year, promotes whatever our core initiative, our program going on inside, or the traveling exhibit. We've had actually, because I've been with the cube for sixteen years, to my knowledge, we've had no complaints from our neighbors or the community around it, so I'm not still sure why that's being struck from it, because it's really invaluable to us, just as a marketing tool and promotion and get the community in.
Thank you for that. And I could see the value, I could see what you're stating. And what I would say as a proud resident of Santa Ana, and proud, my kids are lot, they're all in high school, teenagers, and so, but for some time, we're members, and they were little, we enjoyed both Bubble Fest and a number of other events, and brought family and friends from, from the region throughout. So very proud of the Discovery Cube being in, here in Santa Ana, and I definitely understand that signage creates marketing, creates appeal, it's visible to the traffic and such. So you would understand, as a proud resident of Santa Ana, and, you know, the, the reason why, I also see value in having Santa Ana somewhere, you know, so at present, it's, I don't necessarily, it's referenced, but it's, it's not very clear as to where or how Santa Ana would be presented. So, so what I would suggest and request, as there are requests being made of the, of the city, to allow for some variances and such, I would be really interested in hearing, I don't know necessarily now you would have an answer for that, but how we could potentially incorporate, how the Discovery Cube would invite and incorporate Santa Ana within some of the signage going forward, so that there's a mutual, you know, benefit and such, if we were to be able to allow for like sign three, for example, or inflatables to be up for a month, so that it could reach your, your goals and your desires, you know, to see how we would, might, might be able to have, you know, the city itself be, you know, also promoted, you know, jointly, you know, through some of that signage.
No, absolutely, and that's when we had opportunity to replace the sign that's on the corner, because we're celebrating this last year, our twentieth anniversary, that was something we put up there right away, you know, celebrating twenty years in Santa Ana. So we were very proud of that, and as signs continue to come, you know, it's definitely, you know, our opportunity, and it's our desire to incorporate the city more and more, you know, just being here over twenty years, we are the part of the community.
So that, currently, that's the way it currently displays that?
Yes, yeah, the sign we put on the corner of the building, it does say, it might be in your package, it says celebrating twenty years in Santa Ana.
I thought I saw that, I didn't know if that was conceptual, or if that was, I don't remember.
No, no, that's, yeah, that's an actually year-long sign we put up, probably in November.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Sure, of course.
Any other questions, Kelly? Kelly, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And Kelly was the only card that we had for this item, so at this point in time, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any comments on this at this point in time?
Well, I would have a question, sure, for staff. If there, so there are a couple of requests that were different from what's currently in the report and on the conditions. One is condition seven, to be, to remove the exception to the Bubble Fest and allow for others. And then, condition number nine, the request by the applicant now is to strike that, that If there was specific, I just, I want to go back, this is the planning director, to clarify, so the commission can better understand. If the, the interest of the commission was to allow for inflatables beyond, beside, in addition to Bubble Fest, to a total of four months, did I understand that staff would request to have that, to consider that further, and then in essence, continue the item, or would it suffice to, for the commission to take action to allow for that, for just a general term of, you know, four months a year, and then that staff would look to clarify further with the applicant, if that were to be approved or recommended by the, by the commission?
So, before I answer that question, I'd like to outline the staff's perspective on the Bubble Fest inflatables. One of the goal of the regional signage program is to look at the unique characteristics of the site, the use of the site, where it's located, and help tailor a signage program that would enhance visibility, advertising, but also not necessarily create clutter or blight. Inflatables, as you understand, is not an architectural part of a building, whereas signs can actually be incorporated into architectural part of the building, as you saw, the banners can be incorporated into the walls, the banners can be incorporated right into the cube surface, so those are existing building surface areas or building features that then can be modified to address and accommodate the signs, whereas the inflatables are freestanding, and they will create their own, for lack of better, visual massing, right? Their own height, their own, basically, addition to the building, so for that purpose, I think there are aesthetic issues that we need to understand, there are understanding of what the different shapes could be, so that we can understand how it affects the building. It will be for twenty-five percent of the time during the year, and we haven't evaluated that. So if the commission is considering something like that, I would recommend that we understand better what they're proposing in terms of the extension, both the time and the type of balloons and inflatables that are permitted. Inflatables are actually not permitted in our code, it's very specifically indicated. However, through a regional sign program, the planning commission can consider it, and I think the reason for being is that it does have an impact to the visibility, aesthetics, value of a site, of a building, and also how it's attached, you know. Obviously, we cannot regulate the message, and we're not intended to regulate the message, but we want to make sure that visual blight is not created, and that it's in harmony with the architectural design of the building. So, to answer your question, if the commission, I would recommend that the commission, if you were to consider this, is for allow staff to talk to the applicant, work with the applicant, and get it better in standing, and we can come back with a recommendation on that request. But this particular recommendation is actually tailored to what we thought the application was.
Thank you. I'll breathe back to the chairman. I, I think, overall, it's my, my, I'll provide some of my thoughts, I'm not necessarily ready to make a motion per se yet, but just for further discussion by the commission, I think there is some potential partnership and trade-off here, if you will. I do think, when, whenever and wherever there is an opportunity to highlight the city, I think it's a, it's a positive. I, I think there is some potential, uh, partnership and trade-off here, if you will. I, I do think when, whenever and wherever there is an opportunity to highlight the city, uh, I think it's a, it's a positive thing. And, and wherever we can somehow more clearly incorporate that and include that, I think that that would be a, a, a positive, again, positive thing and a benefit. With regard to that sign number three, it's been there for some time. I understand the, uh, perspective presented by, by staff with regard to, uh, it, that, that sign not necessarily contributing to the aesthetic and architecture. However, uh, you know, I, I, I don't see necessarily a, a pressing need or reason to remove. In similar fashion, the, the inflatables, that they're, they have been there and I think that they've been, the, the benefit, the positive thing is that they've been tastefully done. So that's, that's, I think it adds some credibility. However, I definitely understand the staff's, uh, question because if, I, I, I would agree that it should be more clearly spelled out rather than just leaving it, you know, open. Again, right now we've been lucky that, that it's been done well. Uh, however, if it's not very clearly spelled out, that can change. They get a new vendor, the management changes, something to that effect. And then we could be potentially stuck with something that is, does become visual blight. So how that's addressed, I'm not exactly sure. I would, you know, have the professionals kind of, uh, help address that. So that's my, my general, you know, feedback current.
Thank you, David. Okay?
In my opinion, the sign number three is necessary for Discovery Cube to promote the location for the traffic on the heavy traffic in the major freeway in Orange County. I have brought my children to visit Discovery, um, Cube Center about twenty years ago and now I begin bringing my grandchildren to Discovery, to visit Discovery Cube Center because to me, in my opinion, Discovery Cube is a, a great sign learning, um, opportunity for the, all children of Orange County, especially it's a landmark in, in Orange County as well as Southern California. And it is, is a great tourist attraction to bring the tourists to Santa Ana. And the, the partnership between Discovery Cube and the city Santa Ana should be continued, is to be enhanced. And they think without position, two position, I'm looking at it here. Number one is a considered of land use position. Land, this whatever we, Discovery Cube requesting is, is does not require any area, any exception. It's a meet with our, our city code and, and our job. I think we should support Discovery Cube, whatever they need to promote its center. And I would like to motion to approve the region, uh, the regional plan design program two zero one eight, that's your one ask condition.
Go ahead, Angie.
Um, I'm also in favor of all the signage and would recommend it would be in condition number seven and nine. I would not like to limit their marketing tools. Um, so that's how I stand so far.
So you have a motion to approve as condition and I will, I will consider adapt the, you know, to consider the, uh, the, uh, of, you know, remove of the side, side, condition number seven and number nine.
Okay. Cynthia?
And I would like to make a motion and this is so that, because the project came to us this way and it's different now here at the DICE. So I'd like to make a motion to, um, return this back to planning to look at what's been talked about tonight and come back with a more solid proposal.
But you're asking for a continuance.
A continuance.
We, we currently have on the, on the DICE a, a recommendation.